Welcome to the February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen city council meeting. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Here.
Mayor Broden Humphrey.
President.
Council member Sullivan.
President.
Council member Giraud.
Here.
Council member Hollis.
Here.
Imocation and pledge of allegiance, Pastor Barry, please. We stand.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for your hand of favor on Hazel Park. You've been so good to us. We thank you for those who serve this community with dedication, for our city manager and his staff that are responsible for the day-to-day running of the city. We are blessed with an outstanding first responders, our firefighters, our police officers, and their respective chiefs. Keep them safe, we pray. Hide them beneath the shadow of your wings. We're grateful for our mayor and city council members and their tireless service to this city. Tonight, we ask for your wisdom in all decisions, and may you guide in all discussions. And for all that you do, we'll give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Counsel, can I get approval over the agenda, please?
Move approval of the agenda, Mr. Mayor, as revised.
Support.
Any dissension? The approval is now, the agenda is now approved. Please, just two civic announcements. Helene Zack, please, County Commissioner.
Thank you for calling me first. Now, I have double duty. I have one city council at seven and one at seven-thirty now in the same evening. So, thank you for calling me first. I'm Helene Zack, your county commissioner, and I want to remind you about a couple things. I will be bringing more information. We are switching providers for our Oakland County Prescription Drug Program back to the original provider, which is the National Association of Counties. Along with that, there will be a new opportunity to sign on for discounted family dental plans. And there will be more information coming soon to tell you about this program. We are in, at this point, we have now secured commitments from elementary schools throughout all of Oakland County where we are replacing drinking fountains in the elementary schools. And there's roughly about thirty thousand dollars being spent in Hazel Park, which is beautiful. And it's the type of, it's cheaper to replace the drinking fountain than to test all the pipes and do that. And they're going to have filtration systems so we can also teach children to carry their own bottle, recycle. Very excited. So, they've been ordered, the county commission, we committed, it's over a half a million dollars toward the replacement of these fountains to ensure that we have safe drinking water in our elementary schools. I want to remind people, if you haven't gotten a flu shot, I encourage you to do that. I don't have up-to-date numbers for February, but as of January eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, there were one thousand seven hundred and five cases of the flu in Oakland County. That's our county alone, and it's gone up. So, it, if you haven't gotten a flu shot, you can go to the county health department, which is on Greenfield and Cantalpa, which is eleven and a half mile. And if you can't afford the shot, please speak up. There are funds to help people that can't afford the shots. We did start a new human trafficking website recently through Oakland County, www.oakgov.com, collaboration with the county and others. And yes, we do have a human trafficking issue in our county. Hard to believe, but it's bad. There, for those of you that have smartphones, there's a new app through the Road Commission for Oakland County where you can report potholes. And it is free. You just have to look for Road Commission for Oakland County, and it's an immediate response on reporting the potholes. There's another help, Public Health Initiative through, actually, the state of Michigan. We have an increased scare of hepatitis cases, and as a result of that, they are bringing vaccinations to local communities, bringing them to us. And the closest location is going to be in Ferndale on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, eight to eleven P.M. at Soho Bar, two oh five West Nine Mile. For those people that qualify for lower income and need the funding to pay your taxes to get you federal, you file federally, and you need that money back to file for your local taxes, you can waive the interest until April thirtieth here. To be able to do that, you need to come to the city, call the city, and tell them that you want to waive that interest so that you can get your refund check in time to pay your local taxes. Finally, I do want to announce that I have decided to run for one more final term as Oakland County Commissioner, and I hope you will support me. Never in my wildest dreams did I think I'd be here, but I am still working very hard on things like mobility, regional transit, equitability, senior issues. I'm not done, and I definitely am working on countering some of the things that our Oakland County exec spoke about last week. So, he's forgetting about us on this end of town, as always, and so I have to keep speaking up on our behalf. Any questions?
Wonderful to hear about the drinking fountains for the schools.
Very nice. Thank you.
Helene, thank you. You're, you're an amazing advocate for us. We appreciate you.
Well, I, it's a pleasure to work with all of the engaged, wonderful citizens of Hazel Park, so it's a partnership for all of us. Thank you.
You do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, and so do you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, these are going, these are going to be new drinking fountains in elementary schools here. Well, we don't, what, we're going to have an education. He's mentioning how people will reuse the disposable drinking bottles. And no, if you keep using, though, that's not a healthy thing, but to get a regular drinking bottle, and they're not that expensive, and, you know. You know, that might be an interesting initiative to do. I know that we have some available promotionally. Maybe I can get my hands on some of them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the school system is going to install them and be responsible for maintaining them.
All right. Thank you. Any other civic announcements? Anyone have any civic announcements they'd like to bring up to the podium? See a firefighter back there?
Good evening. My name's Shawn Altman, firefighter at Hazel Park. We're having our thirteenth annual bowling fundraiser on Saturday. We'd appreciate any support. We got lots of rooms for bowlers. We're also in need of lane sponsors. For some reason, we're down this year. Last year, we were at about thirty-eight lane sponsors. I've only gotten about twenty-three sponsors as of today. So, we're just trying to get the word out and see if we can't get a few more. For those who don't know, our bowling fundraiser goes for the youth assistance. Majority of youth assistance, the monies are Hazel Park, the firefighter charity fund. Right off the bat, we take half the money and we give to youth assistance. The other half, we use throughout the, the year for all the other events. And the high school, we donate to, there's some fire stuff we donate to, cancer, MDA, there's a list of stuff that we give to. So, like I said, registration starts at six, bowling's at seven. It's at Hazel Park Bowl. It's usually a pretty good time, so if anybody's available and feels like doing anything, we'll, we'd be more than happy to have you out for a good night. Like I said, we've got plenty of sponsors available, plenty of lanes open for bowlers, so run out and...
See us council people after the meeting will donate as a city council and sponsor a lane.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience that would like to give a civic announcement? Seeing none, close that part of this, now we, city council persons.
Well, as a Hazel Park Arts Council member, I would like to make a civic announcement for the, the Hazel Park District Library Friends has partnered with the Hazel Park Arts Council to host an art show at the Hazel Park District Library. We are currently seeking art for this event. Art submissions can be placed via email to HPDLFriends@gmail.com. The art event is a family event, so it does have to be PG thirteen and nonviolent art submitted, please. Also, this event will be hosted Saturday, April twenty-eighth, from five till eight P.M.
Thank you. Any other council? Yes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Along with the, what the firefighters do and donate their money to the youth assistance, the Hazel Park Youth Assistance is sponsoring a free family swim night at the Hazel Park High School, and that's on Thursday, March eighth, from six to eight P.M. Bring your whole, bring the whole family. There's no registration required. Again, that's Thursday, March eighth, a free family swim night. And the Hazel Park Youth Assistance is also holding a youth recognition night on Thursday, May tenth, from six to eight-thirty. But we are seeking nominations of youth to be recognized on this. So, there's, you can, through the schools, teachers, other people can, usually it's teachers recognizing kids who have worked through difficulties, acts of heroism, or just going above and beyond without any, you know, remuneration or expectations of benefiting themselves. The requests are asking to be sent in by April twenty-fifth, and you can go to, you can see Steve Morton at Hazel Park Schools or Beverly Hinton at hazelparkschools.org. May I get this put on the...
Give it to me. We'll get it put on cable today. Thank you. That's all. Anybody else?
Yes. This Thursday, the fifteenth, the Hazel Park Historical Museum is open from six to eight P.M. We just celebrated our first year of being open, and the weather was awful, but the crowd was fun, and the cake was awesome. So, that will be Thursday, the fifteenth, from sixty-eight, six to eight P.M., forty-five East Pearl, and the building's located behind Hitchcock Realty before Tabernacle Baptist Church for landmarks. And also, this is pretty cool. Winter break is coming up, and anyone with little ones or grandparents that are enlisted to watch them, the twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third of February, there's going to be another dollar skate from noon to two P.M. at the Hazel Park Viking Ice Arena. This is open to anyone. Younger children obviously have to have an adult with them. High school, junior high school students, last time, were pretty independent, and it was a lot of fun that most of our community don't get a chance to use that except at Christmas at the tree lighting. It's a blast. Just a heads up, though, my nephew, who terrorized everyone at Christmas, will be there again. So, he, he thought it was bowling, but it's a lot of fun, and I hope to see folks out there for a dollar. This is the best value you're going to get, and it will exhaust the little ones. So, hope to see you there.
Anyone else up here? Okay, close civic announcements. Open it up for public discussion. Anyone in the audience who'd like to come up and give their time up for public discussion and inform us of what they may have or places they may want to see.
Good evening.
Evening.
Carl Taylor, four forty, West Otis. I was going to mention a few things, but I had some further information given to me that I'm complaining about our city streets not being plowed and our sidewalks not being plowed. And I understand that the sidewalks, people are giving tickets out, and they're not showing up in court for the citations. A bench warrant should be issued on an officer, but then I was told that we don't have enough officers to serve the bench warrants, and that's bad. The city streets, mine isn't plowed. I know about the rest, I know the rest of the cities isn't either, and I want to know why. Why aren't our streets plowed? At least the streets, the sidewalks, eh, but why aren't the streets plowed? Anybody want to answer?
We seem to have a lack of compliance by our fellow neighbors. That's one part of it. And the other part would be, maybe we need to staff a little more when we, to get compliance.
They can, if they're parked on one side of the street, the plows can do the other side. I know they don't like to do that. They have to zig in and out, but come on.
It's not very courteous to your neighbors when you park in the street. Whatever you want, just don't move. I totally...
Take the cars. Ticket them. Take the cars, you guys.
I made several comments to our administration about it the night it happened. I think I kept you up about eleven-thirty that night. Yep.
I think all of us have reached out about the noncompliance during snow emergencies. We are trying to figure out ways to alert people more. We've, we do the cable, we post it on TV, we've also done Facebook, as well as on the signs.
If you've put three police cars out there and a tow truck, they'll get alerted real fast. I know it, you can't do that, but...
Understand that, number one, you're not going to find a tow truck to just take parked cars away when there's all these accidents that they're trying to remove those vehicles first. Number two, I need to correct the statement that you made about serving bench warrants. The officers are not going to go pick people up on bench warrants for a misdemeanor ticket for not...
I know they're busy, and, but, don't, couldn't you have a half a morning once a week or something?
Carl, we, we actually did send the police out. The police did do some ticketing. Three police cars. When you have a city with this level of noncompliance like that, we can go in one area and do a few, we can go in the next area and do a few, but you're not going to get every car in any given snowstorm. All you're going to be able to do is get some of them. So, in order to, we're going to think of some things, maybe to do things a little bit differently. Look, I'm going to, we're going to make a proposal to, Jan Drum has today, to raise the penalty for failing to move your cars. Not quite five hundred, but we're getting close in that direction. So, we're going to hopefully up that substantially today, and then we're going to look at some ways to improve compliance, better notification. Again, don't know what else we can do. We put it on every media. We notify the TV news. We do everything we can. If you get four inches of snow, you should get your vehicle off the street. I wouldn't mind using volunteer posse to go and ticket these cars, because we will do whatever we need to do to encourage them to move, because the level of compliance that we had this year was, for whatever reason, inexplicably, the worst we've ever had.
You get a, a car that doesn't have four-wheel drive and they back into the snow, and, and I'll give you an example. My daughter-in-law, stuck. It's stuck. What are you going to do? She's got a baby in the car. She can't leave the baby.
Absolutely. And I, I do want to correct one other misstatement, too. First of all, I want everyone to know, every street was plowed.
Mine wasn't.
What happens is, my DPW tells me every street was plowed. What happened is, when there's a lot of noncompliance, you leave a substantial amount of snow in the street. That street, that snow is then tracked throughout the street. The level of slush and mush accelerates, and it's very hard to pass the street.
Well, hate to tell you, but mine wasn't.
Okay. I will pass that along to DPW.
And there's two cars on my street right now that are all covered up with snow. They've been there for weeks.
We are ticketing, so hopefully they will get to...
Take them.
Those cars.
Take them. I hate to be a rotten person about it, but enough is enough.
We all feel the same way you feel. Everybody is upset with the folks who haven't moved their cars.
I have two women neighbors. You guys know them. They're out there cleaning their sidewalks and their driveways, and they're, if they can do it, and they're, they're older than me. And, what do you mean, wow? Thanks. But my mother-in-law is eighty-four, and she does her sidewalks. The sidewalks in the Hazel Park area is bad. I was, I was told the reason why about the tickets. They're not complying with the tickets. They're not showing up in court. Boy, what happened to the old days where they'd come out there and get you? All right. Any of you guys, thank you very much. Happy Valentine's Day to you, except to you.
Happy Punske Day to you, too.
Good night, Carl.
Anyone else? Good evening. Good evening.
My name's Michael Icorn. I live at twenty-three, three seventy-six Crossley Avenue here in Hazel Park. This is my wife, Maria. I'd like to read an invitation into the record.
Go right ahead.
To the Hazel Park City Board, we are Michael and Maria Icorn. We are stakeholders in the city of Hazel Park and own four houses here. The houses we own are our own home, two licensed rentals, and a house at twelve-eleven East Mirror that is under renovation. The house at twelve-eleven East Mirror is the reason we are here tonight. The city of Hazel Park wishes to tear it down. This is scheduled to be discussed and/or approved at the fifth of March meeting. For this reason, we would like to invite the mayor and each of the council members to visit the site before that meeting so that you can see the work that has been done in the house and make an informed decision on the demolition issue. And if you wish, my phone number to set an appointment for that meeting, or just let me know you're going by, is eight-ten-five-one-three-seven-oh-one-six. And I'd like to say thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for your time. Any other, anything else? That's about it? All right. Thank you. Anyone else like to get up and speak in public discussion?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Ladies. I'm here both on behalf of myself and behalf of some of the citizens of Hazel Park. I brought an article that was in the Monday Oakland Press. This article kind of addresses the issue that I'm here about tonight.
Joel, could you state your name and address for the record, please? I'm sorry.
Name is Joel Raymond Holcomb. I live at three sixteen East Bernhard. Been there since nineteen fifty-nine. Been a member of the planning commission for twenty-five years, retired from that. Was an auxiliary placement for twelve years, retired from that, is a lieutenant. So, I've served the city as much as a citizen can, I think. Anyhow, this article states, I'll read just a paragraph. With the average age of the population of Royal Oak increasing, city commissioners are moving to set up a task force to determine how to accommodate senior citizens. We recently had some really bad weather, and I think Hazel Park's responded pretty well to it. It always has. We've had our streets cleaned before Royal Oak, Ferndale, and most of the cities around. So, I applaud you guys for that. However, my son happens to live in Florida. One of the girls that he graduated from high school with, which was Hazel Park, her dad lives on Madge. He's going to court tomorrow for noncompliance and snow removal. The gentleman's a little over eighty. Personally, I'll be eighty-five in about three weeks. So, I know where he's coming from. He suffered a stroke. He's in rehab right now, and he probably won't go to his court appearance, but I've recommended that he get an attorney to appear for him. He suffered the stroke, possibly is the pressure of, of being noncompliant, because I think his ticket was like December the twenty-sixth. He, like me, has had a difficult time getting somebody to go move his snow. I mean, friends and family, his daughter's in Florida, he has another daughter that's up here, but she's not capable of, of snow removal. I went to the senior center to find out who could I call to get snow removal for my sidewalk. They gave me a couple of phone numbers for OSHA. As it turns out, they both went to the same lady. And when I called, they were closed before, because of inclement weather. So, they had a message on the answer machine that if you were calling about snow removal, you could put your name on a list. However, the list was closed because they didn't have enough contractors to supply the, the service. I discussed this with my son, and he made a recommendation, and I want to pass this along to your police department. You have a liaison officer that works with the schools. He could talk to a, a school counselor about getting some of the young people that are interested in going to college where, on their resume, they can put on there that they did a little community service. And while they're doing a community service, also make a few bucks towards their college expenses. So, I'm just, I'm just asking that if you post a notice on somebody's door or issue a ticket, you should also have a way of supporting that senior citizen. I would say at least twenty-five percent of your citizens in Hazel Park are seniors. You've got a, a large population that cannot go out there and shovel. Nobody came to my door this, this winter, except for one time, to offer to shovel snow. I'm not capable of doing it. In fact, three weeks ago, I slipped on the ice while I was putting salt down and fell on my back and jammed my arm, and, you know, I'm, I just, I'm not really capable of going out there and shoveling snow. So, my recommendation is, see if there's a way you can support the citizens. If you post a note on their door, give them a phone number or some department that they can call about getting some service. It's, it's not even a matter of cost, although it should be cost-effective for most of us. We don't, a lot of us live on, on social security. The people who live next door to me, they're only incoming social security. Whenever I get my sidewalk done, I usually have theirs done at the same time. But that's what I'm here for tonight. The gentleman, unfortunately, age has a factor in this. I couldn't find a note. He lives on East Madge, the first block between Russell... He lives on East Madge, the first block between Russell and the Service Drive.
Joel, could you step over here and give us the gentleman's name so we could take care of that?
Well, the problem is, is that I couldn't find it.
His name?
Is Noel Spector's Check, something like that. It's.
Check and see what situation is.
I think he lives at like.
The ticket's.
Twelve-ten or something like that.
Is it in default already?
No, not if he's coming in tomorrow.
Well, he's, he won't be coming in tomorrow. They just, yesterday put him in a, in a nursing facility or hospice, I don't, something. But I recommended to his daughter, and she's in Florida, and I talked to her.
I would need a name, a correct name or a correct address.
Well, I'll see if I can, can find it when I get home and I'll call it in to add there. So.
That'd be good.
Leave it in my office.
And.
Think of your seniors.
You don't know people's ages when we go by and send them notices. Usually it takes a while that the sidewalks have not been shoveled before they'll even give a ticket.
Yeah.
They don't give tickets right away. It takes a long while. And sometimes if they, if they contact the city, we try to help them, especially, you know, the disabled or the senior citizens to procure someone to help them with snow removal. I know that we have lists that we've gone through periodically and tried to update to help people on a variety of different things out there. And snow removal is one of them. But we have to be very careful, too, because when we automatically send out notices, people think we assume that they're old when they're not, and then they get mad because they said, why are you assuming that I can't do it? So it's a catch-twenty-two situation. If you ask, we're there to help. But if you just automatically say, you know, if you're, if you're infirm or, or you're unable to, you're disabled, then they think that you're assuming that they're not capable and they get upset. So we have to walk a fine line. Ask. People need to ask for help, and we're more than happy to do it.
And we did have that very same program that you're asking about a few years ago. It's fallen by the wayside now. We used to have, the Breakfast Club used to send students to shovel snow, and the city actually got a grant from the Sioux Tire Foundation to pay for that equipment. So we can look at that and see if some of that equipment is still available. If not, again, if there's interest from the schools in helping us out, the city would probably be happy to purchase some shovels and gloves and things like that to assist those students. So we'll make that call and see if we can't rebuild that program a little bit.
We can take some money, reallocate some money for the CBDG funds and if, if we need to buy some supplies.
We'll find it. That's a minimal cost if we can get the kids to volunteer.
That's what it's there for.
Because it did, it was very effective a few years ago, and it was a very big program.
I have several shovels that I could donate if we get some volunteers.
Well, having the volunteer is probably the key thing to the program.
That's the hardest part. The shovels are cheap.
We have used some non-violent offenders who have community service as part of their sentence to go out help also.
Well, yeah, and I can understand that. However, when it's below zero out there, even that's not really fair to an offender. Go out and.
No, when it's bad like that, it's difficult.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to enter this article if you folks would like to read it. It does. It talks a little bit about what Royal Oak is doing as a community. I remember when we built our senior building over there, I was on the U-DAG council. And we, we went out and, and looked at different builders, the kinds of structures that they were offering and so on. So it's been around a long time. So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you for coming in.
Valentine's Day, and I hate to put a burrow under your saddle, but.
You're not.
This is something I think even the new council members need to be looking at.
I literally just met with my neighbor across the street about this. I hired my snowman to do her snow as well. And her and I were kind of brainstorming on ways to better address this situation for our residents that, that need the assistance because there's a lot of them, whether it's disability or an injury or, or your age or whatever your reason. There, there's a lot of people here that could use that help. So we got to find a way to function through that.
That's why I am here.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Any other public discussion?
Hello, Jake Sleavat, sixteen-twenty East Hayes. On the topic of snow removal, on my block, I've noticed, you know, people have really embraced the concept of neighbors helping neighbors. You know, I go down my street. I did clear the whole block one day, and a lot of the houses I noticed, not only were they clear, but their neighbor's house and a couple around them were clear as well. And so it's really great to see that. You know, I see a lot of people around the corner. They go out with their snow blowers on East George and go up and down the street. So I just want to say to everyone who's doing that, you know, not only clearing their own snow, but, you know, helping their neighbors out, especially their neighbors in need. Like, that's great. I love seeing it. I didn't really think this was possible a couple of years ago. It wouldn't have been something I thought I would see. So thank you to everyone that's doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to make a comment? I close with discussion. I have a comment. I'd like to see if we can have our rec department get, send out, maybe get a list together of seniors or put somehow notify some of the, somehow publicly notify some of the seniors. They like to read newspapers rather than emails. Maybe we get some, put a big ad in the Madison Park News, which goes to every door, that they can subscribe, fill out a, you know, and have call the rec center and have them be put on a list so we can better get to them. We may not get to all of them this year, but they could be on the list for, you know, maybe next year.
First, we got to get the volunteers.
We got to, but we got to find, we got to find out what kind of, how many people we're going to have to set up for helping. As well as grass cutting as well. Some of these people cannot mow their grass. They need help. They're alone. They don't have any, any family. Some, some, you know, there's some seniors that just don't have that resource. We're just feeling fortunate because we have family, most of us. There's just some out there that don't. It's sad. But our neighbors and a lot of our neighbors that do help other neighbors, and as the gentleman said, and it's great to see. Hazel Park's always been that giving and helping other people. But see if Serene can come up with some kind of plan for you and maybe come up with something.
We can start that process.
Thank you. That takes us to our special presentation for our finance department. Lacey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name's Lacey Christensen. I'm the Finance Director. And I'm here tonight to cover the twenty-seventeen financial statements. All of you should have in your packets the actual financial report. I'm not going to cover this too much because you had all weekend to peruse this financial. But if you have any questions, just let me know. And we are going to cover the graphs that I handed out because that just gives you an overview of, of the financials, primarily General Fund and the Water and Sewer Fund. But I do want to point out that we were issued a unqualified opinion, which means that all of our statements are fairly stated and, and that the numbers represent what's truly there.
Unqualified is the best you can.
That is the best.
Doesn't sound good.
The microphone, Jared just texted me. They can't hear you.
Unqualified is the best.
Is the best.
Even though it sounds bad, it's the best.
Right. Means everything is fairly stated. So the first page of the graphs we're going to cover, this is the General Fund revenues. Your total revenues for the General Fund this year were about fifteen-point-six million, up from fifteen-point-four million last year in twenty-sixteen. The primary difference is going to be property tax, small increase in property tax, small increase in state shared revenue, which gives us the increase. The property tax is primarily to, due to the increase in property values, which we all know only, we only capture rate of inflation, a little bit less than with, with Hilly Rowback, but we also had the Ashley Capital that helped with that as well. And we will see a little bit more of a bump next year with Ashley Capital because we will get to capture the, the full.
The full amount.
Yeah, this year we did not get the full amount.
Does this year include the Eight Mile project?
This year doesn't.
Reconstruction down there? Or is that next year?
Correct.
Thank you.
Your second page is going to be your General Fund expenditures. Your total expenditures for this year, about fifteen-point-five million, which is up from fifteen-point-one million last year in twenty-sixteen. And the primary increase is going to be in your general government and your public safety and your district court. All relate to pension, healthcare, the, the legacy costs that we have, that we have to prepare for. Otherwise, the other, other sections that you see, public works, public recreation, they're all reduced from last year, including the transfers out, which is, the majority of the transfer out goes to the ice arena. So the ice arena did a great job at managing their expenses, increasing their revenue, and therefore our transfer was down even with that debt payment we still have to make. Your third page is just going to show you your unassigned fund balance. This is the fund balance that's not restricted for use or committed or assigned. So our unrestricted, or unassigned, rather, fund balance is one point, almost one-point-four million. So we increased that from the one-point-one-five the year before. The addition to fund balances was about a hundred thousand, but some of our prepaid's got released, and once prepaid's released, it goes to unassigned. The next page is just going to show, just a recap of what I just talked about, but show you in a, in a bar graph so you can see the comparison. Our revenues are still above our expenditures, that, about a hundred thousand that I had mentioned that went into fund balance. So we're still doing a great job of managing with the, managing the expenditures with the small increase in revenues that we receive. And I also wanted to point out, too, that I have a note, our fund balance is now about sixteen percent of expenditures, so we're slowly every year increasing that. The old recommendation back in the good old days was about fifteen to twenty percent. We dropped to about ten percent was the recommendation when things were bad, and that's all people could get is ten percent. And now they're back up to about twenty, sometimes even more than that with the OPEB and pension application. Yeah, we were pretty low. We were pretty low, but we're back up to sixteen percent. Following page is going to be your, the property tax revenue, and you can see again the, the small bump up that I'd mentioned earlier, about four-point-three. Following page after that, we're going to talk about the Water and Sewer Fund.
Let me go back. You said four-point-three. On average, what kind of percentage would that be? For the bump up on the, on the property tax revenue, percent wise overall, would it be like a five percent, thirteen percent increase?
No, for our, for, between the two, between, from last year to this year.
Well, it looks like a one percent, but I mean, from, from what we usually bump up a little bit. I mean, is this normal, right where we should be according to the Prop A and Headley?
Right, because the, the only difference that we had, because we're, we're fully developed, the only difference that you, you can count is that Ashley Capital.
I only want to bring it up for the public so they know that, that's the Prop A and Headley is kind of holding back. You know, your property taxes are going up. We only get a smaller.
Exactly. Yep.
So that everybody has a clarification.
So the only reason why it's over, it could be over.
Right.
The, the rate of inflation, the little bit we got is because of the new development. Otherwise, we don't, there's nothing new we get besides, you know, the lesser of.
I just want to kind of clarify that. Not that Mr. Klobuchar hasn't made that little clarification for many, many years. So I just wanted to pop that up there. That's okay. All right, go. Sorry.
No, the next page is going to be your net position for your Water and Sewer Fund. The only thing I really wanted to point out this year is that you're unrestricted. Is it, is it a negative eighty-three thousand? We, that, that primarily means that we need to make sure we're setting the water and sewer rates properly. I know that we, we pass along the small increase that Detroit gives us every year. And I know we have to, you know, we do our best to manage so we don't have to pass too much on to the citizens. However, we do have to watch that. I think we'll, we'll be okay next year, but if we have a two-year trend, then we will have to sit down and figure out what we need to do to, to set the, the rates correctly so that we can properly fund our Water and Sewer Fund. And as we all know, the, the infrastructure in the Water and Sewer Fund is aging, as it is throughout the city. We do, we will be putting together a long-term plan as to how we're going to fix that, but that is all going to factor into these numbers.
All those water main breaks. I'm up the four on my street.
And it will continue, especially with the crazy weather and the older these, the, the pipes get. And then your last page is just going to show another graph of your revenue and expenditures for the Water and City. And then the, the bottom line, the black line, is your operating revenue. And again, we actually had an operating loss this year. It was small, but it's something that we have to pay attention to because that just, again, reflects the, the rates that we set. And that's all the graphs. Is there any questions or anything in the financial statements you want to cover? If you have any questions, feel free to let me know. And as always, the, you know, the main concern that we have is, you know, our upcoming legacy costs of OPEB and pensions that we have to keep our eye on and some of the state requirements that we now have for that.
And Lacey is working with Chris Duberg. We're in the process of beginning, well, we're beginning the process, actually, to put together a proposal to go for bonding for the road repairs for the resurfacing of South John R. from the expressway to Eight Mile, and then the repair of John R. from the expressway to Ten Mile and the repair of Nine Mile.
And as you know, and we've mentioned it before, that we had some street bonds that fell off that we paid them off this year. So bringing on new bonds to correct these roads won't, you know, won't income our bottom, you know, hit the bottom line.
Actually, we'll save a little money.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. We'll be close.
Depending, you know.
Yeah, but considering the one fell off, at least we, at least we're not taking on extra debt.
Thank you very much for the report, and hopefully we can sit down next month and have a.
We plan to have a study session. Someone is leaving us for a trip to someplace nice and warm. But when, when that person returns, we will sit down with a study session with her, Chris Duberg, and also Chief Buchholz to go over subjects that are important to the city.
In that same, in that same workday, can we talk about why, where we're going to go with the water rates?
We might be a little premature for that, but, you know, we're, we're close. Again, Lacey's confident that if, you know, we, we're not going to look at a big adjustment over what Detroit gives us. But there will probably be a small adjustment this year. Right.
Just don't want to get behind the eight ball. I'd rather be a little.
We will not.
So the safety, you know, precautions, just in case we do have another bad year. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Consent agenda, council. I need an approval on the consent agenda, so if anyone.
I'll move approval of items one through six on the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have any discussion on the items one through six? I'd like to see if there's a representative from the Secretary of State's for the approvals, like, business license that we have. Yes, we do have a Secretary of State on Dequender just north of Eight Mile, just for those that may not know yet. Approval of business license of ten-seventy-one East Nine Mile Longevity Testing LLC and Substance Abuse Testing Centers. Anyone here? Would you like to come up and give your, introduce yourself and give your hours and operation? It's like a free commercial.
My name's Robert Antertek. I've been in this type of work for over ten years. I was in the auto industry until, of course, that crashed. We're opening up, I do run two offices now in Oakland County, NOBA testing. I ran DTS testing in St. Clair Shores for seven and a half with Dr. Ronald Pitt. We have four PhDs on hand, staffing. Our hours are going to be seven days a week. Monday through Friday, we're going to be open six-thirty to eleven, close, reopen, five to eight p.m. We'll be closed midday. We'd be testing for the courts, driver's license reviews, employment, things of that matter. Our parents bringing in their kids wanting them tested. NOBA testing right now, I have a three-hundred-and-seventy-five client base right now, mostly out of Oakland County courts.
Did you say, did you say eleven-thirty at night?
No, no, in the morning.
Okay.
We have a split shift because nobody comes in midday.
Right, they're all at work.
And then on the weekends, eight to eleven, Saturday and Sunday.
Anything else?
Nope. Hoping to do business here. I could have went in Centerline, could have went back to Sterling Heights, anywhere, but there's nothing down here for the people down here protesting. They're driving north. So we came here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, and seeing no discussion, a dissension to motion, saying none. Consent agenda is approved. Ministry of Reports, this is an added-on item, increase the cost of tickets for non-compliance with snow emergencies to one hundred dollars. What was it previously?
Thirty-five dollars. So I just walked into this agenda item myself, so I will turn it over to Jandra. But obviously, I think we know we're going to have to do something with this. So. So probably some increase in the cost is certainly warranted. Jan?
Yes, I believe in years past, the mayor had even suggested increasing it before when there was not as great of a problem as we're having now. You don't want to get a ticket, don't leave your cars parked in the street. It is getting out of hand. I know I got, you may have called the city manager, but he called me then, so it does roll downhill and, and it's, you know, it's a problem that has to be taken care of. Code officers can't do anything with the cars in the street, that's under the jurisdiction of the police. However, the police are very busy doing, you know, keeping crime down and doing everything they need to do.
And when you have a snowstorm, frequently, they're tied up dealing with accidents and traffic control matters.
We have to do something, this is a first step. If council decides that they want to raise it even higher, we have to do something. We can't, we can't, like I said, we can't be out there towing all the cars, we don't have the resources.
May I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
Maybe have some of our DPW go around and maybe post some flyers at the end of the main street on the main road, just on the main road, so the neighborhood, for those that don't have cable or don't, or communication handicapped, to be able to, for lack of a better phrase, sorry.
We can do that, that's a good idea.
So they could actually see that there's a post, a big red or yellow forest and green sign, cardboard sign, just put on the stops, and it'll be low to stop signs or something.
But I want it.
For a day.
Right, we'll try to do that, but that's not, if we don't post them or they don't see it, that's not a defense.
No, it's not a defense, but I'm just saying is, for when we see those storms that they are saying, guaranteed we're going to get, you know, good amount of snow. Not on just every whim.
Your Honor, through the chair.
Yes.
I live at the Ferndale end of the south end of the city. And Ferndale, on their no parking day, their street maintenance day, they also have a sign, on the same sign that says, "Over four inches, no emergency, you're not allowed to park on the street." So that would be possibly a good use of our current signage. I remember when the city finally got tough on the vehicles that were parked in the street and the street sweepers couldn't come through. And one of the cars had been on our block for so long it had a tree growing up through it. Yeah, so, you know, it's not going to happen overnight, but the compliance this time around, part of it is driveways, lack thereof. My end of the block, we have very, very few driveways and a lot of, lot of vehicles per house. And it was a scramble to get everybody off the road. Plowed some of the vacant lots and then some of the people that were plowed in by the city got tickets for parking in the vacant lot on a non-snow emergency day. So, I mean, it's got to be consistent. I'm not comfortable with a hundred dollar ticket or jacking the fee up when it's not currently being enforced consistently. Signage would be a really good way to start though, and we already have them up on every corner, every entrance and every exit.
Maybe we can add an expert.
Again, like I said, we can start the signs, but obviously, we posted signs for that. Signs cost money, we can start doing that.
Well, this season's almost over. Let's come up with some kind of plan the next, by the next council meeting so we can have a way to go, so we don't forget about it.
All plans are, work's in progress.
As soon as, as soon as the weather gets warm, we forget about it.
No overall solution that, no magic wand that we have that we will wave to fix.
No magic wand to fix anything, but it's just a matter of which way do we approach it.
Yes. If we maybe don't have the resources to place them at the end of every street, maybe having some type of sandwich board out at least at the main intersection in front of the car.
That's what I'm thinking.
So that it will at least.
I think that's what the mayor's.
Well, you know, like every, you know, let's say our, your area from like Nine Mile to Oakham, have a sign there, have a sign like every quarter, half mile, so people can see it on the main roads.
We also have an agreement.
Not everybody travels through the main intersection every day.
We also have an agreement with CVS that we can use their marquee for advertising, which we've never done. I think that we should put something on there that says, you know, "Snow over so many inches, cars must be removed."
Or just "Snow emergency called by the City Hazel Park."
Remove cars off streets.
You know, I think if you get four inches, maybe we should just say, "If you get four inches, you need to move your car off the street."
They've been doing that for years, Ed, and they.
I mean, that's, I know, they, this was the worst compliance we've ever had.
It's been, you know, this is really the worst, yes. I have to say, this is the worst compliance. Well, let's come up with a plan, let's have something in place hopefully by before winter, March twenty-first, as for next year.
Were you going to want to raise the penalty up a little bit?
I think it would be second offenders, what do you think?
We can't just either.
All or nothing, hey?
Yeah.
Oh hog.
You're going, or you're not going?
You've got to remember that we cannot get our emergency vehicles down there when you have all those cars down there during a snow emergency. You're talking about saving lives versus, you know, with regard to non-compliance.
I got you.
Do we know what our neighbors are charging?
Oh, that they're charging more than a hundred. This is, when it's a snow emergency, that's a serious offense in most municipalities.
Through the chair, who's going to be writing the tickets if we can't get emergency vehicles down the street?
Go Maxwell.
If it's on a Saturday and Sunday, like this last one?
Utilize officers.
Well, we've got.
I mean, you can come down my block now, there's cars that are buried in still and nobody's writing tickets. And they are definitely obstructing the street.
Well, we'll be talking about that in staff meeting, you know, again, I'm not opposed to bringing somebody in on overtime just to write tickets, but it's one vehicle. I want you to know, this is just one tool in the quiver. We're not ever going to get all of them, I'm not ever going to write every ticket.
No Dodge Charger.
What we're going to try to do is, yeah, Dodge Charger is not going to work on that. That's why we don't buy the Dodge Chargers anymore. But anyways, we're not going to be able to get them all.
Royal Oak charges fifty.
Fifty, okay. Should, we need to come, I think we do need to come up.
At least, I think Ferndale's what, two fifty, isn't it?
I, I'm not, let's see.
I think there's a sign.
Madison Heights, looks like a hundred. I don't have Ferndale on here, I was Googling.
I thought I saw a sign, they had it posted down there. Can we get a motion on this issue? Have we had no?
Split the difference and go seventy-five if you want. It's up to you guys, but I think.
We can just double the thirty-five if you want. I'm sure that there's also, we have a cost.
Yeah.
Of doing business and having people out.
Absolutely.
People not paying their tickets and coming to court and fighting it, so. Do we have to post this, what would we notify?
This is by resolution, all your fines are by resolution of council, which are posted then in the city clerk's office.
So it won't be published in the paper or anything?
We'll put it on Facebook though, and we'll put it on the city's website.
On the cable channel as well?
Sure.
I have no problem increasing this fee because it's, this is a matter of safety. People being able to get emergency services at their homes. This isn't like, we can't sweep, a street sweep. This is sometimes life or death. And in regards to the gentleman who was here earlier discussing the safety of our elderly and not as able-bodied neighbors, if an ambulance can't get down their street.
Is that a form of a motion?
That's a big deal. I, I would be comfortable with increasing it. I'm not sure if I feel comfortable with a hundred, but I do feel that it needs a stiffer penalty than thirty-five. I would be more comfortable potentially doubling this fee to seventy.
Is that your motion? Just asking.
I'm, yes, I'm going to make a motion to increase the cost of non-compliance for snow emergencies to seventy dollars. I make a motion, please.
We have a support?
Support.
Any more discussion? A dissension? Motion passes.
I had a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Let's.
On this, just driving here, just driving here, down Carlisle. The two vehicles were so close, I mean, my van, it was pretty tight. I could imagine if it was the fire or the ambulance trying to get through there, it would be, somebody would be missing a mirror.
You can't get the plows down there either then.
No, what happens is the center of the road shrinks.
Can we, can we hold this subject just for a second? We'll go right back to it, Thomas. Any boards and commissions? No, no appointments here? Tabled items, seeing none. Open up for new business, now we can talk.
Oh, I just wanted to point out, while we were in the middle of the snow emergency, I saw some people outside shoveling, they had a car parked in front of their home. I stopped, I said, "Hey, is that your car?" They said, "Yes, it is." I said, "Well, I don't know if you know, there's a snow emergency." And they were like, "Oh, we didn't know." I said, "You know, you should move your car, you're going to get a ticket." And fifteen minutes later, they moved their car. So a lot of times, if you just have that open dialogue with your neighbors, maybe go knock on a door if you know, maybe they're sick, maybe they have the flu. Just, again, always have an open dialogue with your neighbors and we can also work to solve this problem that way. Because again, not everybody is on Facebook, we still have that, that wonderful tool of our voices that we can use.
And that's why I brought up the point of putting the CNG news to use for us, for those seniors that we can't get to. And maybe we should post something like that about our new fee for snow removal.
We will put that all over the place.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion on that issue or any new business from any council members? Go ahead, Auburn, councilperson Auburn.
I've been getting a lot of messages and calls with complaints about the LED lights that businesses have that have been popping up. It was also a topic of discussion, topic of discussion at the last planning meeting. I know Jeff Campbell is not here tonight, but I would like to make sure that the administration and we as a council can start to work towards making sure whatever policies or ordinances need to be updated, that we tackle this issue before it gets even more out of control. Because the lights are very bright and in some cases, they can be a little tacky.
Mayor Protem, yeah, that was, I was at the planning commission as well. It was the unanimous sense of the planning commission that they would like city council to begin to look at an ordinance to deal with the LED light situation. So that was, I believe they passed the resolution unanimously requesting that we take a look at this. So Jeff Campbell is working on that and I will get with Jan as well and we'll see if we can't do something.
Is it the part about them flashing or is it just that they're bright?
They're very bright, at some points, they can be rather blinding.
Because I had a few businesses I talked to, south to me about them flashing.
The flashing is also an issue.
Flashing off because actually the flashing part is in our ordinance currently. They can, lights cannot, signs cannot flash. So that is distracting to drivers going down the street because it flashes through a rearview mirror or a car mirror. It can, it can cause you to swerve or something in the road.
Yes.
And that's how we came up with that years ago. But there is some other signed ordinances, I believe it, it's just not been followed with the intent of the ordinances in the past. And maybe correctly get back on it also, maybe see what those ordinance can do on their own. Any other new business?
Yes, Your Honor, snow removal part two. I am hoping that code enforcement has been out and tackling the commercial strips, especially along John R. On the way up here, I had to dodge people that were walking southbound in the lanes because the sidewalks look like game trails. People waiting for the bus stop, can't get to the street, they're plowed in, they don't have a place to stand. It's incredibly unsafe and there are just an, I don't even have the word for it. It's, there's no excuse for some of these businesses. I'm seeing all these cars come in and people come in and there's no snow removal at all. And I live on a corner house on a main road, so I get it. When those plows come by, they throw a lot of stuff up there. And I got out there and I kept my corner clean and I've got three feet either side of the fire hydrant too. So if I can do it, I think that businesses that are here should be able to do that. But it is a serious safety issue along John R. especially.
Any other council?
They're out there all the time, sending notices, giving tickets, people are ignoring them.
How about Jonah Properties? That was one that has not cleared the snow, the previous snows that we've had. Jonah. And this time, I was waiting to see if they were actually going to comply and they haven't even tried. And their landscaping in the, that was before the fall, was terrible. Usually, they used to do a better job keeping up on that property.
We'll get on that.
Jan, it's, I can't walk my dog, it's unsafe along John R.
I went over with Carl, the number of tickets that have been written. I mean, they can't go over there and pull them out of the buildings. They can only give notices and write tickets. And they've cut, I mean, you're talking about hundreds of tickets they've written.
And do.
You know, it's like, okay, I'll give you a ticket, okay, fine, yours is my turn, thirty-five dollars, no problem, I don't have to deal with this.
And for those businesses, should we have raised that particular fee for property maintenance issue? Should we, should we look at those fee structures?
Habitual offender.
We've, we've got fees with regard to property maintenance issues and those are two hundred and sixty-five dollars each. Your snow tickets are too low.
No, a lot of them aren't, Mike, I'm sure they aren't, Your Honor. There's some, the businesses are technically vacant and they're just, they're not maintaining them.
Okay.
Can we take it under property maintenance instead of snow removal?
You have to have a certain thing that you have to prove the elements to. And I can't prove that it's not properly maintained by not cutting the grass or having junk and debris or things like that around when it's non-movable snow.
Forty-eight hours, we can't go plow the sidewalk for them?
We don't have the, we don't have the people.
There's no way.
You're an ATV like I did. That's what I did over the weekend, I got tired of the show, those snowplows.
Everybody is working, I mean, non-stop.
Yeah, we've issued a ton of tickets, we really have. We were out, we met with them this morning, they're out, they're writing like crazy, so.
But if nothing else, the downtown area should have, in this corridor, those sidewalks should be cleared within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Because we have patrons back and forth to these businesses. They have patrons come into their businesses in that mall. Why is it just the area where the mall is and not the sidewalks?
Your ordinance requires that forty-eight hours after the snow stops and it's been accumulated, it must be removed.
Right, that's what I said, forty, I know what the ordinance says.
So they go out there, they have to give notice first, they give notice, then they get the ticket and it's a non-stop endeavor for them. You've only got three code officers right now for this entire city and we have been inundated with snow.
Sure you have.
We're writing, they're writing, they're literally writing tickets non-stop.
You've got them out there, they have to get out, they have to take the ice off of their windshield wipers so they can even drive down the street and they're freezing their butts off going out there trying to get this under control. We need people to comply. We need them to do something, you know, tell your neighbors, tell the businesses, walk in, you know, "Why don't you shovel your parking lot, why don't you shovel your sidewalks?"
I have a question, Jan. Could, you know how we publish for grass, can we publish for snow?
We do publish for snow. But you wanted everybody to have notices.
No, write them, write them, this is obvious, write them. I want residents to have notices, I want businesses to be.
Businesses should have the notices, more so. They, they have, they're making money as a business.
Business should just be written a ticket.
They're there to make a profit. And in order to make a profit, you need to be able to patronize the business. And that just don't make any sense to me, why, why couldn't you just clear the sidewalks? Nothing, it's not that big a deal.
Well, trust me, we had a lot of problems with.
Sometimes it's hard to get out there at eight o'clock in the morning, seven o'clock in the morning, I know I do it, but my son-in-law does it too.
We get, we get calls and it sends, you know, them out of, okay, they're plowing their snow into the streets, you got to stop that. And then you hear the, okay, that my contract with the last snow company expired. I went to renew it, they're busy, they won't take on mine, so I hired somebody else and they're terrible. And then I had to fire them and I can't find somebody. Yeah, we hear the excuses and we do everything that we possibly can. I'm thinking of using Carl and all the other people to get out there and start walking the streets because we don't have enough manpower. Because you have too many people not complying. That's why I asked that we increase the fees because we got to start getting people to notice that this is a problem.
So again, I want everybody to understand, there's not an easy magic wand solution for this because for every non-compliant lazy resident that we have that doesn't shovel their snow, there's a few, like Joel mentioned, where you have seniors or you have the disabled or you have someone who simply isn't able to comply. So we'll try to help those folks and try to get it right. I remember during the old program, we had a nice lady, she was well up into her eighties and she needed some assistance and we went over there and she had this lazy bum of a son there that I don't think ever moved out of the house, that was in his late forties and able-bodied and, you know. So no, that person didn't get the help, they were told, "Listen, you need to go and shovel." So we try to make sure that people who are really in need have some help. So we try to make sure that people who are really in need have some help, but this is a, this is not a problem where there's an easy solution to. When you get a snow in Michigan, you're gonna have a mess. So we'll try to do better, we'll try to do better with compliance. You've given us one more tool today. We'll try the signs, placing those out, that's a, I think that's a good idea for people who say, "I didn't see it, I didn't hear it," but this is the same way that we've notified them for twenty-plus years, plus there's now Facebook and social media and all those other tools that we have.
There's a ton of media, I'll let you...
People just didn't move.
More so than we had twenty years ago.
So now it's gonna cost you...
Let's go old school.
Twice as much money.
As, as a lack of a better phrase. Let's move on. Uh, communications from the department heads. I see Chief Bukos back there, you have any comments, please? He is very enthusiastic.
I think, uh, some of those can be brought up in the study session that you were talking about, but, uh, crime mapping should be coming soon, uh, phone calls and emails today, I think that's coming out real soon. Also, uh, body worn cameras are going out, some of the officers have them. It's a lengthy process, as far as the training goes and the equipment needed for that, but, uh, so not all of them have it, but some do. We're hoping by the end of the month, into March, we should have everybody.
Okay. Anything else? Else to... Anything else?
Uh, as far as crimes, our numbers are good, nothing, uh, big right now. Um, this Friday, we were busy during the snow emergency, and we weren't able to devote all our people to that, one of the guys was stuck at the hospital with a prisoner for a while, so...
Okay.
But it was a busy night, and we weren't able to write the amount of tickets we would have liked to also.
Thank you again.
All right.
Public safety, first thing.
Thank you.
Any other department heads in the audience? Seeing none.
Yes, uh, again, Lacy gave you the update. Uh, we did pretty well, we've done what we can to increase, uh, our tax base as much as we can, given the fact that we're fully built out. And as you can see, the Tri-County Commerce Center has helped, and it, it did noticeably improve our revenue, uh, position. We'll constantly look forward, other ways to get new builds into the city of Hazel Park. Because of the interaction between the Headley Amendment and Proposal A, our revenues from our existing tax base are capped at five percent of the rate of inflation, whatever is less. Obviously, our expenditures, uh, for legacy costs, for pensions, healthcare, and the maintenance of, uh, aging infrastructure are going up much faster than the rate of inflation. So Michigan's system of municipal finance remains fundamentally broken.
I knew you were going there.
So...
But it's very true, as much as we make fun of it, it's just so sadly true.
It is true. I mean, it's, you know, I, I've almost become a caricature when I say that it's fundamentally broken, but it's true, it simply is. So, uh, you know, we, we try the best that we can to generate revenues, and thankfully our residents were smart enough to pass those millages, because those millages were the best investment that they could make in, uh, the city, and those, uh, millages have paid off with increased property values and increased net worth for our residents. So I'm pleased that we are, as reported by Metro Mode in their article about Hazel Park, which was, uh, widely read, uh, we'll post a link to that on the city's Facebook page. Uh, very flattering in pointing out the, all the cool things that are happening in Hazel Park, the property value increase is just one thing. Just because the values go up doesn't mean we get the revenue. And then people think, "But when those properties sell?" Yes, when those properties sell, the taxes go up, but do we receive any additional revenue? No, because then the Headley Amendment kicks in, and you can't exceed the rate of inflation from your existing property tax base, so I have to lower everyone's millage rate. So our revenues remain trapped in a vice.
Yep.
Uh, snow removal, uh, I wanna thank our DPW. Our DPW actually did plow every street in the city. It may not look like it for some of the streets where there were a lot of noncompliance with vehicles not being removed from the streets, because those streets, uh, actually unfortunately clogged up with slush rather quickly. We are going around on the street maintenance days, and we are cleaning up those streets, uh, day by day, and we did try on, uh, Monday to make a pass through at least every street down the center, so that there could be some, uh, increased ability to pass on those streets. So our DPW actually did a good job, our residents, most of them complied, a significant number did not, you have to do better next time, or it's gonna cost you some more money. Uh, Helene Zach, uh, again, she was here today, she does an outstanding job, I wanna thank her for always showing up and always being, uh, a very responsible representative for us at the county level. Uh, and then finally, I wanna recognize, uh, my part-time administrative assistant, Jared Gageos, who, uh, also serves as the director of the Hazel Park Coalition, Community Coalition. He spent last week in Washington representing Hazel Park, uh, before the National Organization of Community Coalitions, and I wanted to give him a shout-out for doing a, a, a great job in that capacity, as well as the service to the city of Hazel Park. That's all I have.
Okay. City attorney?
And we will have a brief executive session.
Okay.
Um, I, I, I do appreciate everybody's comments and concerns with regard to the snow and everything out there. I wish I had more people to work in that capacity. Understand that, uh, when you have three people who work more than eight hours a day but get paid for eight hours a day, and they have to go out and take pictures for houses that are dilapidated, and go in front of the hearing officer, and then in front of you guys, and they get sent out to different buildings by different council members for whether to check on, to see if somebody's illegally growing pot, or if the business is not compliant with the ordinances. Uh, you'll have also, uh, a lot of complaints from residents, as well as having to take phone calls, go to court, write the tickets, look for the people, tow cars, everything else. There is not enough hours in the day for them to get it all done. If, you know, I mean, we can prioritize things, but then they're not gonna be able to answer when you call and want them to go out and check on different things all the time. That takes a lot of time for them to do that, too. There's, there's just not enough time. Um, if you have any other suggestions that you wanna come up with, other than I could use ten more code officers, um, I'm more than willing to listen, but there's, there's too many things that they have to do for the number of people that I have and the number of hours in the day. Pam consistently works fourteen hours a day and gets paid for eight. She's got a family at home, she's here all the time because she loves this job. I've got, uh, a former Hazel Park resident, he works more than eight hours a day and only gets paid for eight. Uh, my other one, Leslie, she drives an, over an hour to get to work and an hour to get home, but she is here more than eight hours a day. Not because they get paid more, fourteen dollars an hour people, out in that cold, freezing weather, and it's because they like working here and they wanna make a difference. If you have constructive suggestions, take it, but I only have three, and I only have so much time and a ton of work. Um, the only thing I can say to the residents and the business owners out there, comply, please comply. Remember, they do a lot of things that you want them to do to help people, too, just like they helped Landmark Church when you had a dire situation. Who was it who helped you? A code officer. Um, there's residents out there that need help, they want suggestions, they want names, they want numbers of people who can help them with their property maintenance, with their repairs, with their snow removal. They help them, because that's part of their job, too. All of that takes time, and everybody wants to come in, and they all, their problems are worse than anybody else's out there, because it's their problem, and they want it addressed now. Um, we're trying, but we need the residents and the businesses to also do their parts. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it takes us to, uh, councilperson Holland.
Thank you all for coming out tonight, and bear with me, my nephew has learned how to share, and he shared his cold, and I'm finally over that now, so no contagions here, but I've lost my voice. Um, I want to extend my condolences to the family of Lieutenant John Colley, one of our longtime officers here, recently lost his father, and I was able to visit with the family up in Hopcroft, and, um, family's been here for a long time, and I just wanna formally extend my condolences. And the week before that, I was in the same visitation room at Hopcroft for my neighbor Wilma. Um, the reason that I picked my house was because of the cool, most awesome neighbors that lived next door to me, and when I first saw the house, it was, it had been not taken care of in a number of years, but the house next door to it, oh my gosh, the garden, the flowers, and, uh, they just turned out to be such wonderful neighbors. And Terry is bouncing around in the house by himself right now, and I know he watches this meeting at home, and Terry, we love you. And, uh, during, during this time, Hazel Park Fire Department came in and took Wilma into the hospital, uh, Christmas Eve, and she was able to come home and do home hospice, and passed away just two weeks ago. And, um, everybody on the block, nobody parked on the street. We made sure that all their friends and family had a place to park, and, um, I wish to thank all my neighbors for just the compassion and the love that they extended, and Terry, I love you, you are the best neighbor. Um, that's it, thank you.
Councilperson Sullivan.
I wanted to, uh, wish everybody a happy Fat Tuesday, um, as well as a happy early Valentine's Day. Go out and tell somebody you love them tomorrow. I'm not stealing your line, Andy. But also, um, I wanna thank our first responders here. I know that this weather is difficult on everybody, and your, um, thoroughness and dedication to your job really keeps our community safe, and it's something that we all value. Um, and I wanna thank the residents that came today and braved these cold temperatures to come and, and address issues that are concerning you. Um, we always love having you here and hearing what your, uh, what your concerns are, and it gives us a better idea of things that we need to work on harder. So, um, thank you all very much. Drive safe.
Councilperson McCarroll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna thank everybody else for coming out again tonight, and, uh, hope to see many of you out Saturday night at the Hazel Park Bowling Alley for the Hazel Park Firefighters fundraiser. It's always been a good time. Um, also, this is Tom Solomon's line, so, if you love somebody, tell them, if you have children, hug them and tell them you love them every day, and have a happy Saint Valentine's Day.
Councilperson Og.
Uh, again, just like my, uh, my fellow councilpeople said, thank you everyone for coming out in the cold weather, uh, for coming, speaking, telling us, um, your, your thoughts and maybe what's going on in your community, whether it's, you know, "Hey, they didn't plow my street," or "Hey, it was great, I saw my neighbors helping out," um, 'cause I think that just reminds all of us, um, to go out, help our neighbors, um, and, and I hope everybody keeps it up, and I hope it spreads.
Thank you. I think it's been a very productive meeting, and I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, and it's been, uh, the democratic process, as another former councilperson up here used to say, is a great opportunity for your voice to be heard. I do wanna say, uh, happy birthday to my wife tomorrow, and happy Valentine's Day. But I also like to say to everybody out there, even if you don't have that special someone at Valentine, and you see someone that may need a little attention, send them a card. Tell them, make them feel that someone's thinking of them, one way or another, that reach out and tell somebody, someone you may not have talked to in a whole year. Give them a call. Doesn't hurt, doesn't cost anything. Be a friend, be human. And with that, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, uh, we do have a brief, uh, uh, executive session, and, uh, before I